Chair calls the April 12th of 2018 Stanley County Board of Education meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all of you here tonight and we're going to be in for a treat here in a minute. I've already, they, I did a little by a while ago and put me to sleep up here, so they're good. But anyway, without further ado, I would like to recognize Ms. Glenda Gibson to do our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
First of all, there's two scripture verses that I would like to share as our teacher, staff, and students find themselves in the last nine weeks stretch of school, of the school year because sometimes it can be overwhelming and exhausting. For our teachers, therefore my dear brothers and sisters, be steadfast, immovable, always excelling in the Lord's work because you know that your labor in the Lord is not in vain. And that's from 1 Corinthians 15, verse 58. For our students, hold on to instruction; don't let go; guard it, for it is your life. And that's Proverbs 4:13. Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for our teachers, our staff, and students. Fill each student with fresh enthusiasm and a heart that is excited to learn and grow. Give them confidence and grace as they enter into the last nine weeks of the school year. Bless our teachers beyond measure for their willingness to instill wisdom into the next generation through education. Be with us now as we meet. Lead, guide us as we talk, plan, and listen to one another. Let your light shine through in all that we say and do. Amen. Let us stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, we'd like to recognize Ms. Melissa Smith, principal at Central Elementary.
Good evening, everyone. All right, we have a very lovely looking crowd. I won't be before you too long because of the interest of time and we're here to celebrate the fact that we're getting ready to show what we know as students in Stanley County. And so, the Central Glee Club has something very special that they'd like to share with you to inspire students as we come to a close at the end of the school year. And in other words, when they're taking those tests, whether you're high school, middle school, elementary, you are not alone. But we are all in this together. I do appreciate you, Mrs. Gibson, for sharing those scriptures. It leads right into exactly what the students needed to hear. You are not alone. All you need to do is follow instruction. But I'd like to take time to highlight Mr. Bailey, teacher at Central Elementary. He is our lead coordinator of the Glee Club, Happy Club. And then there's Mrs. Susan Hesse who's joined in and also helped to coordinate the Glee Club. And of course, we have our very own music teacher, Ms. Candice Nord. And anytime there's some singing going on, she's going on. And so, with that being said, we are going to bless you tonight in song. We thought about maybe doing five or seven songs, but we've narrowed it down to one. Let us bless you with one song going tonight. And you are not alone. We are all in this together. What? (applause)
Together, together, come on, let's have some fun. Together, we're there for each other every time. Together, together, come on, let's do this right. Here and now, it's time to celebration. Our body figured it out, yeah, yeah. That all our dreams have no limitation. That's what it's all about. Everyone is special in their own way. We make each other strong. We're not the same, we're different in a good way. Together's where we belong. We're all in this together, once we know that we are. We're all stars, and we see that. We're all in this together, and it shows where we stand. Hand in hand, make our dreams come true. Everybody now, together, 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 everyone. Together, together, come on, let's have some fun. Together, we're there for each other every time. Together, together, come on, let's do this right. We are here and speaking out with one voice. We're gonna rock the house, yeah, yeah. The party's on, now everybody make some noise. Come on and scream and shout. We arrive because we start together. We can't be as one and all. We're all in this together, once we know that we are. We're all stars, and we see that. We're all in this together, and it shows where we stand. Hand in hand, make our dreams come. We're all in this together, once we reach. We can fly, go inside, we can make it. We're all in this together, once we see there's a chance that we have, and we take it. Boom, pop, sing along. Yeah, you got it going on. Boom, pop, in the round. Everybody say it now. Boom, pop, everywhere. Wave your palms up in the air. That's the way we do it. Let's get to it. Come on, show the world. We're all in this together, once we know that we are. We're all stars, and we see that. We're all in this together, and it shows where we stand. Hand in hand, make our dreams come. We're all in this together, once we reach. We can fly, go inside, we can make it. We're all in this together, once we see there's a chance that we have, and we take it. Boom, pop, everywhere. Wave your palms up in the air. That's the way we do it. Let's get to it. Come on, everyone.
Might need to adopt that for the theme song for our entire school system. Chair would recognize Dr. Jeff James for a couple of recognitions.
Mr. Chairman, Board members, the Governor's School of North Carolina is a five and one-half week summer residential program for intellectually gifted high school students. It's also the oldest statewide summer residential program for academically or intellectually gifted high school students in the nation. Student nominees are reviewed by the North Carolina Governor's School Selection Committee. Only 35 percent of nominees are selected to attend. Stanley County Schools is very proud to announce our selection from West Stanley High School is Austin L. Lindsay coming up. And in the discipline of social science, Austin will attend Governor's School West at Salem College, Winston-Salem, on June 17th through July 25th. Thank you, sir. We'll get a good photo of you. At least a good shot of you. At this time, I would like to recognize Mr. Bradley Udi of the Stanley County Arts Council for recognition.
Good evening. I'm Bradley Udi, chairperson of the Stanley County Arts Council and a 2008 graduate of North Stanley High School. Tonight, I'm here to acknowledge the winner of the 2018 Fine Arts Educator of the Year Award. The Fine Arts Educator of the Year Award, affectionately known as the Jim Kennedy Award in loving memory of longtime arts advocate, teacher, and coach, Mr. James D. Kennedy. The award recognizes a fine arts teacher in the Stanley County public school system who has made a significant positive impact on the arts and education and who have inspired students to pursue, appreciate, and respect the fine arts. Previous winners include Lori Watson, music teacher at Stanfield and Locust Elementary Schools, Michelle Osborne, art teacher at Central Elementary, Stacy Bottoms, art teacher at West Stanley Middle School, and Jessica Kaiser, band and music teacher at Albemarle Middle School. In appreciation, the award recipient receives a $250 classroom grant. It is my pleasure to have presented this award to one of my personal heroes and mentors, Mr. Frank Pulis. Mr. Pulis has been the band director of North Stanley High School and North Stanley Middle School since 2002. Is that right? And has built the largest instrumental music program in our county. In these last 16 years, Mr. Pulis has enriched the lives of countless students, inspiring some to pursue careers in music and all to keep music and the arts as part of their lives. For me, Mr. Pulis was much more than just my teacher. He was also my friend. I continue to consider him one of the guiding forces of my life. Being part of Mr. Pulis's band program at North Stanley is one of the highlights of my life. Through his program, I made lifelong friends and have enough memories to last me a lifetime. Although a career of music was not in the cards for me, because of educators like Mr. Pulis, the arts have been a critical piece of my adult life, leading me to be involved not only in the Arts Council, but also the Stanley County Concert Band, Corral, Uwari Players, and the Talent Company. Outside of the classroom, Mr. Pulis stays busy filling our community with music. He is the director of vocal and handbell music at First Presbyterian Church here in Albemarle, one of the conductors of the Stanley County Concert Band, as well as performing with the Catawba College Band and the High Point Orchestra. He teaches piano lessons to students as young as four years old, to adults, and oboe lessons to college students at Catawba. Because of his involvement in the community, Mr. Pulis was actually nominated for both our Fine Arts Educator of the Year Award and as our Arts Person of the Year. On behalf of the Arts Council, I would like to thank the Board of Education for their continued support of arts education. The arts are an invaluable part of our community, making Stanley County a better, more creative place to live and work. We are grateful for your unwavering support of our cultural education program, bringing many different art forms into the lives of all of our students. The partnership between Stanley County Schools and the Arts Council will continue to enrich the entire county. So it's my honor to once again present the 2018 James D. Kennedy Fine Arts Educator of the Year Award to my friend, Mr. Frank Pulis.
Are there any corrections or deletions or changes needed for the minutes? If there are none, the minutes will be approved as presented. Committee reports, Ms. Gibson, instructional program.
If you recall, a couple months ago, Ms. Yao from the Butterfly House presented information on a program titled Stop, Go, Tell. And I believe that you all have, each person, some more information about this. I have requested that Ms. Yao present another brief overview. Is she here? Yes, yes, yes. Okay, if you could come up, Ms. Yao, Ms. Pennington, just to kind of refresh our memory a little bit.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Ms. Gibson, for inviting me back. So I was at the instructional committee meeting and I did present a curriculum that I'm very fond of and am very excited to speak with you guys about tonight. I know you've all heard the famous instructional quote, "Stop, Drop, and Roll." And I have a four and a six-year-old, and now that they've learned that in preschool and school, now they don't want to sleep in their room because they say, "Mom, if we have a fire, we gotta stop, drop, and roll." So they tell me that all the time. There's another program that I would like for kids to be as familiar with, and that is called Stop, Go, and Tell. So I am Amy Yao, the director of the Butterfly House Children's Advocacy Center. And without telling you a whole lot about it and spending a lot of time tonight here, essentially, we're one of the 40 accredited children's advocacy centers in North Carolina, and we take referrals from law enforcement, the Department of Social Services, medical and mental health providers on children that have any forms of abuse, including sexual abuse is what we see most of, physical abuse, neglect, and witness to violent crimes, as well as drug endangerment. And we work with a group of folks. We provide forensic interviews, victim and family advocacy. We work with law enforcement, DSS, medical providers, mental health providers, the school system, collaboratively to provide services to these children at our center to hopefully promote the best outcomes possible. And I did not mention the prosecution office, but we also work with them. The prosecution rates have skyrocketed since we have become a part of this team. So approximately 75 percent of the patients that we serve are the age of four to 12. So if they're not in school, they're going to be in school soon. Of course, we do serve all kids that are 18 and below, and we've actually served over 2,100 kids thus far. I created the program in 2005, and we've served a lot of kids in that time. I'm very fortunate to work alongside other great directors at some of the Sister County CACs. One is Rowan County, the Terry Hess House, as well as the Dove House in Iredale County. And several years ago, Iredale County, excuse me, Rowan County kind of took the bull by the horns and started a program, and they named it the Stop, Go, and Tell. And essentially, it's a body safety program that they did a little research and thought it would be best to implement it in the first and fifth grades. And essentially, the first, it's two semesters, or it's one class each semester, so it's two classes in a year. For the first graders, it's 30 minutes each session, and for the fifth graders, it's about 50 minutes each session. And you actually have a PowerPoint in your packet that Hope provided you guys with, that it's there. Rowan County, when we haven't developed ours yet because we're still in the planning phases. But it's the PowerPoints that they've used. I've actually been to some of the classes, some of the school personnel have been, and we've been very impressed with how it was presented, the information that was presented, as well as the response that was given. Also, in your packet, you have the letter that the actual Student Services Director in Rowan County compiled and has disseminated to the principals, and they kind of sculpted it and they send it out to all the parents of the first and the fifth graders at the beginning of the year, just kind of an informational thing. It's not really asking for permission, but it's just kind of telling them about it. And of course, if anybody has any problems, they will, of course, you know, handle those as needed. So the basis of the body safety class, like I said, you have the PowerPoints. I'm not going to bore you on them. But it really bases itself on six safety rules of the body safety program, and each one is designed for, or the one for fifth graders is designed a lot more elementary. The one for fifth graders is a little more specific into some things. And the one for fifth graders does have quite a bit, or has a piece on internet safety and sexting type things, so, which is unfortunately very needed in what we do. But the six safety rules are, is the first one is, "It's my body." The second one is, "Ask an adult, am I safe?" The third one is, "Always have a plan." The fourth one is, "You gotta tell someone." Then, "Never keep a bad secret." And the last one, and we really want to instill this in these children that we see, is, "It's not my fault." My goal was also to get into the middle schools, eventually get into the high schools, teaching some stuff about human trafficking, internet safety, how important it is not to do the sexting, and the consequences to all of that. And a question I know each of you have is, okay, this sounds good maybe, but how are we going to do this? So I'm very fortunate to have come up with some extra money through a grant. And I've been, since I started the Butterfly House 13 years ago, working with the school system and a lot of different student services directors. I've really wanted to get into the school system a lot more, but so I have money to actually provide this position. So I am an employee of the hospital, the director of the Butterfly House, and it is a grant-funded position. But this grant, we've actually got this grant, some, a piece of this money every year that I've been an accredited center, and I actually become accredited in 2007. The money has actually gone up a little bit every year, and last year, it did go up considerably. So that's how we're able to have this money. Like I said, I've been at the Butterfly House 13 years. This has always been a goal of mine. I just hopefully and prayerfully hope that you guys will also support this endeavor with the Butterfly House, working with the school system. You know, it's not just to be in the schools. That's one of the big things, but we want this person to just be entrenched in the community. I do a lot of community outreach, but you know, the more people we have out there doing community outreach, talking about sexual abuse prevention, teaching adults the steps in sexual prevention, how we can actually, each adult in here can potentially, if you go through this particular class, a class that we will offer can prevent 10 different children from being sexually abused. I just want this person to really get entrenched into the community, but a huge part of this job will be getting in the school systems, working with the guidance counselors, working with the principals to sculpt this position, just to custom fit it to our schools. So I know I've talked a lot. Does anybody have any questions about the Butterfly House, the position, anything going forward?
Is this, does anybody have any questions?
I know that you said every year, kind of, the money increases funding for this. So you don't see that it's something that we start and then all of a sudden, it just kind of falls apart?
I do not. I have, you know, this money has been given to us since 2007, and like I said, it's steadily increased, but I can't promise that. I know I have a contract already for next year.
And this is when you'll be starting this, is the fall?
That is my goal, yes. The position, the job posting with CHS is a little more, I've never hired with CHS. I was just with Stanley Regional. But everything has been approved and we're getting, is getting ready to be posted.
Any significance in choosing these two grade levels or...
Good question. So Beverly actually was in the meeting when we met with, the Rowan County folks came down here and met with some of the school system as well as myself. And they just had done some research and they just, they wanted the kids, pretty much what they had said is they wanted the kids to kind of get in kindergarten, get their feet wet, and then start it in first grade, and then also kind of repeat it in a more elevated level in fifth grade before they go into middle school.
And I wanted to add that we have done our due diligence. We included Susan Brooks, our elementary curriculum director, in our discussions early on, and she has researched the standards at both first and fifth, and this program, the content fits beautifully with some required standards at both grade levels.
Additionally, you're saying this is, you said 50 minutes for the fifth graders?
50 minutes per semester for the fifth graders.
Per semester, so you hit, so you go back to the second semester and do another?
Yes, yes. And the PowerPoint that I submitted, you can see the first grade, first semester, first grade, second semester, fifth grade, first semester, fifth grade, second semester. And like I said, this is Rowan County's and we'll customize ours, working with the school system and, you know, the group that we work with. But, you know, we were very impressed with theirs. It'll be probably very similar.
Are you looking for us to give you the green light here? Not red light, green light?
I am.
Okay.
Well, I'm very impressed with this, and I would like to see the, you know, when we finally get our plan, you know, working with Ms. Brooks and everything too. But I would like to move that the board accept this program for our first and fifth graders and that we give Ms. Yao the green light to go.
That a motion by Ms. Gibson, we have a sec, to, well, the motion is to approve the program that's been presented, and I would second with Mr. McIntyre. Is any further discussion? Here are none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. So you've got the green light.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much.
Do you have anything else, Ms. Gibson? Okay, facilities, Mr. McIntyre?
Yes, in your packet, you'll see our minutes from the Facilities Committee meeting on March 20th. The first item on there is a Stanfield property request. Mayor Kevin Barbie joined us and was making a request about a piece of property that's adjacent, adjacent to Stanfield School to expand a park facility for sports. However, there's not much detail to the presentation, so we asked him to get, with his longer, maybe draw up a proposal and come back to us maybe with a dollar figure, not just on a purchase, but also maybe a lease agreement. So we're still holding tight on that one. Second, we discussed, and this actually went to finance, so I'll bring it up there as well, but was our summer shutdown discussed by Dr. James. So I can talk more about that finance if you'd like.
Speaking of finance, you're up.
All right. First is the activity bus cost. It's being recommended from the facility to increase the current charge for activity bus use from $1 to the state rate of $2.22.
Okay, is that coming from the committee as a recommendation?
Yes.
All right, doesn't need a second. So the recommendation is to increase the activity bus fee from $1 to $2.22, which is the state rate. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I will say that the guarantee, I think, in committee, we want to make sure the principals understand, this is part of our efficiency rating, which greatly impacts what we're trying to do. So I think our commitment's going to be, we're not going to let a school take a loss. So we'll definitely ensure that, but it's much cheaper for us to do it this way than it is to hurt our efficiency rating. So I think that's why the recommendation is to meet the state level.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
I guess my question might be more to Dr. James. Why do we just not round that number to $2.25?
I think we were going with the state recommendation, sort of, to offset the, maybe, negative aspects of it, just to think we're trying to make three cent off of our schools. If we adopt their state rate, then it will help us. And I will tell you that state rate will change again next year. So as long as we adopt the state rate, it will not impact our transportation efficiency rating, which we're desperately trying to get to 100 percent, so we're able to draw down every dollar that is due the county. That was brought up, but $2.22, I mean, I was, I mean, at least that's the state recommendation. We wanted to at least go with minimum at their recommendation. That would be the only, the only reasoning behind that.
Any additional discussion? Okay, here are none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. You have anything else, Mr. McIntyre?
I do. Next is meal costs, and this is the adult meal cost. It's a recommendation coming from the Child Nutrition Audit, and it is to increase the adult meal cost to $3.75. Dr. James, what's the cost right now?
I think we're spending about $3.61, and so every... I think we're spending about three sixty-one, and so every cent between those two amounts, we have to pay out of local funding, and based on our prior budget history, we definitely need to break even. So, we're not trying to make any money off of our adult meals, but do want to be at what the recommendation is from the audit committee that come in.
Okay, uh, the motion is to increase the adult meal cost to three seventy-five. Uh, is any additional discussion or questions?
I would like to say, Chairman, uh, Paul, that it comes with water or tea, so I would challenge anyone to get a meal for three dollars and seventy-five cent that included a drink. And if you can, please let me know where that place is at, it would save me a lot of money.
All those in favor, I'll signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, you got one other thing here?
I do, and it is our summer shutdown. You can actually see a little bit more detail if you refer back to your facilities committee minutes. But this is basically going to adopt a four-day week during the summer, Monday through Thursday, operating hours of seven AM to five PM, and it's to save on utility costs.
Does anyone have any questions on this? Just, just for information purposes, we, I think we did this one year, some years back, but I don't, I don't, I don't know how you really get a good handle on how much you're saving unless you run it for two or three years of running to get some data, 'cause the weather changes, you know?
It does, and actually, uh, I've got data from other counties, I know in, of course, Iredal's about twice our size, but Iredal's saving somewhere around five hundred and fifty thousand, and they only shut down for six Fridays. We're proposing to do eight, uh, so our guesstimation is about two fifty, two seventy-five, but of course, once approved tonight, if approved, then we'll meet with the municipalities to make sure they understand that they need to be adjusting for that four-day week, so we're, sometimes, you know, they charge a month or two ahead based on prior rates. So, I do know with, with the city, we definitely have to meet with them, so after the, the vote tonight, then that'll determine if I need to talk to Mr. Bowers, what we need to do to make sure all the municipalities onboard. But we will have a good handle on it, hopefully by the end of this first summer, so we can come back and give you an exact figure on those savings.
That's, uh, central office and the schools, is that correct?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Um, was this, as a, as a recommendation committee? Okay, uh, so we don't need a second. Any further discussion? Here none, all those in favor of, uh, doing this, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. McIntyre? Okay. Personnel, Ms. Watson?
Uh, yes, we had a personnel meeting right before this meeting, and we'll have some information about that coming out a little bit later. Thank you.
Okay, uh, policy, Ms. Crump, I think you have some things for us to vote on.
Yes, we have several policies that have been tabled for thirty days for final approval, so everyone here has read over those, they've been tabled, posted on our website, and we're just ready to vote on these. Policy code eleven fifty, business advisory council.
Got a motion, a second. All those in favor, any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, policy thirty-one-ten? These, the, these come, these came from committees, so we really don't need a second. Uh, any, uh, any discussion on thirty-one-ten? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Uh, policy code thirty-thirty, school year calendar. Any discussion on that one? Here none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, policy code fifty-three-fifteen, any discussion on that one? Here none, uh, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That one carries. Uh, anything else, Ms. Crump?
No, sir.
Thank you. Dr. James, do you have anything under L R N?
Actually, this was Assistant Principal Appreciation Week, uh, I was able to send each Assistant Principal a appreciation card, thanking them for their hard work, and in discussions with my hundred-day plan, I could agree no more with one of the board members that spoke with me, that we definitely need a good succession plan in, not only for teaching positions, but also for leadership. Every great organization has some form of consistent succession plan in place. The Assistant Principals having that step from the classroom to Assistant Principal to Principalship is a very important part of running a organization that's very consistent and well-performing. So, I will say that we are part of a P. Pierce Program, which is a, a southeastern RESA grant, and that is a very good program, I was involved with it in other counties, so that's one great way that we can train upcoming school administrators. But we will be putting a plan in place to do an Assistant Principal Academy, so we can start doing some training for future leadership. Uh, that's very much needed, and the great thing about the P. Pierce Program, it even allows classroom teachers who are thinking about going into administration to step up and earn their two-year degree, MSA degree during that process. So, not only us have recognized that succession planning is important, but the southeastern RESA consortium has understood, especially in rural counties and in rural states like North Carolina, we're not completely rural, but in rural states like North Carolina, there is a great need for leadership, and so building that capacity, I think, is one of the best things we can do. But again, I want to say to all the Assistant Principals, as I was one at one time, a lot of times you're the workhorse in the building that lets the principal do a lot of the other political things that are also involved in a Principalship. So, we do appreciate that, and we commend you on the hard work you do for our system.
Curriculum and instruction, Mr. Poplin?
I have no report at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Calvert?
Draw your attention to the personnel agenda. Section one is for your information, and section two requires action.
I move we approve section two.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, uh, second by Mr. McIntyre, uh, to approve section two. Uh, any discussion? Here none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calvert. Dr. James, I think you're taking care of Ms. Hatley's, uh, tonight, and we have three budget amendments.
I'm, uh, filling in for Ms. Hatley tonight, and of course, as a superintendent, you know, finance is definitely one of the foremost things we pay attention to, so we do have some budget amendments. The first one is Budget Amendment fifteen, if you'll see there, it's an overall increase that's in federal programs.
We'll go ahead and do each, each one of these as you go through.
Okay. You wanna do them individually?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on that one?
A mo- motion to approve Budget Amendment fifteen, Mr. McIntyre, do we have a second? There, have a second, is any discussion? Any questions? Here none, uh, those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no.
Okay, the next amendment is Amendment sixteen, and it's also from state funding, and basically it, we have been allocated our summer reading camp, salaries, transportation, et cetera, so that's an amount of about a million-dollar increase for summer programming, and that's typical. That's from state.
Motion by Mr. McIntyre to approve Budget Amendment sixteen, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Gibson, is there any discussion or questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. Amendment carries. Uh, Dr. James?
Budget Amendment seventeen, of course, is another federal program, uh, in, in dealing with federal programs for the last five years myself, this is not unusual, they, the feds either revert money or give you money, it just depends, there's constant revisions of our federal dollars, uh, monthly. It's allotment reallocations is typically what they call it, so just a, a decrease here of twenty-eight thousand dollars that the feds have reverted back.
Motion by Mr. McIntyre to approve Budget Amendment seventeen, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Gibson. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no.
Thank you, Chairman Paul.
Okay, the next item, and we appreciate the patience of those waiting to speak, um, we have to sign up here to address the board, uh, Ms. Jenny Henson, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. As a product of Stanley County Schools, I'm indebted to the school system. My name is Dr. Jenny Henson, and I'm here with Dr. Lamontica-
Excuse me, could you pull that mic to you just a little bit?
Sure.
There you go, thank you.
My name is Dr. Jenny Henson, and I'm here with Dr. Lamontica Barnum, Dr. Elaine Coats. As mothers and as doctors trained in pediatrics, we would urge the school board to reconsider placing armed volunteers in our schools. Part of our training has included gun violence, and your proposal is deeply concerning to us. To me, volunteers don't belong in high-risk situations. I've worked in the emergency room, I've been with children in crisis mode, talking them down, and I can tell you, the first time that happens, you yourself can really freak out. I don't think twenty hours of training is sufficient to help someone understand the nuances that are necessary for special needs children, for racial sensitivity, for alternatives to physical force that would be particularly involved with kids. And while I greatly appreciate the good intentions of these retired police folks, I, I would feel more comfortable having them spend time with kids without weapons, or, or having them hand out parking tickets and, and let our paid force deal with our children. We also, in my opinion, should not put volunteers where we need highly-trained experts just because we're strapped for cash. Let's just imagine that you have appendicitis and you don't have health insurance, and you came to me and I suggested, well, we can't really afford a surgeon, but I have this wonderful retired physician, I'm not really sure how much surgery they did, but we've trained them for twenty hours, um, they definitely have your best interests at heart. I, I don't think you would feel comfortable, I think you would feel quite scared, and frankly, I feel very scared right now. Has a single Stanley County law enforcement officer ever attended a nationally-recognized program training on safe, effective responses to an active shooter on school property? To my knowledge, they've not, so I'm really wondering why we are going to be the first or second county in the state to lead a program like this that's not been proven, when there's so many suggestions out there supported by experts that we have not yet entertained. Wouldn't someone planning to shoot up a school simply choose to come when the volunteer isn't there? How effective is a pistol gonna be anyway against an automatic weapon? What happens when a fight breaks out on the playground and distracted by a kid mouthing off, which would be quite different for a police officer than an adult mouthing off, another child reaches for their holster? And do they even have the most secure protective holsters, given that they're volunteers? What impact is this gonna have on children of color and ethnic minorities, given what's going on in our culture and our, in our society right now? There are so many questions, and ultimately, what if a volunteer accidentally shoots a student or a teacher? God forbid, but why else does the last paragraph of this North Carolina statute say that basically I must hold the school harmless if my child is injured? All it takes is a terrible incident and a sympathetic jury to sue the heck out of our school system, and probably you personally. I'm deeply disturbed that my children will be part of an untested experiment. I'm worried about our community, and I ask that this decision be reversed, or that parents at least be given a school choice, so that they send somewhere where they feel their children are safe without armed volunteers. Thank you so very much for your time and patience.
Okay, Dr. James, you are up at bat.
All right. You know, I don't like to talk. The, uh, the first thing I would like to do is congratulate Central Elementary School's program and Ms. Smith and her staff for the great presentation. I could use some of that energy, uh, working through my hundred-day plan. I will say that the hundred-day plan, I've got to meet with middle and high school student advisory groups, and I find that probably the most enjoyable part of this job is getting to talk to the students, that's where it matters. It's surprising what they will tell you, their voices were heard, uh, that will go into our hundred-day summary. I've also met with Albemarle High School, the stu-, the Learning Academy, and Central Elementary staffs, and got some great input from all, and again, all this will be in the summary to the board to help set direction moving forward, uh, and I can ensure the community that this board and myself take, uh, input from our stakeholders, because that what, that's why we're sitting here, is to make this the best school system in the state, and we can do so working together. Again, just mentioning the Assistant Principals, congratulation on the hard work you do. Um, of course, I've really enjoyed some community meetings and meeting with different people across the county, just to get varied inputs. Uh, we've not had a selected group we're meeting with anyone that wants to meet, and sometimes their, their values may not be what the board's values are, but at least they have an option to be heard, and there's always, I've found, common ground among alternating opinions somewhere. So, great to have everyone's input. I know that some of the things that have come up, I've worked both in a small school system, and I've worked in a large school system, and there's pros and cons to both, and I think sometimes the thought process is, if you have small high schools, you tend to have less programming, and that can be true if you don't have a very forward-thinking board or a superintendent. So, you gotta think outside the box when those situations present themselves and come up with better ways. I know that most of us grew up in bricks and mortar, but the, the field of education is going far beyond bricks and mortar, even at the collegiate level. Uh, very few schools now are just totally bricks and mortar, there are hybrid classes, there's online. Uh, while some kids do learn better face-to-face, there are kids that learn better, uh, in hybrid models. So, just thinking about that, I wanted to make sure I knew where we were at, so I asked the question. So, right now, uh, Ms. Harvey, thanks to her, done some due diligence, put some work in, we're offering over eighty CTE programs at our middle and high schools, and I will tell you, that is significant number of programs for a county this size. Uh, I've been in counties that were much larger that did not offer that, so that tells you that we do, uh, take input and understand that we have to offer a variety of things for a variety of students, and that's what we're gonna work on as a board and myself moving forward. Also, an astounding number to me, that I, I'm, I think Ms. Harvey even said she was sort of surprised, we offer over seven hundred Career and College Promise courses currently, and we're, um, looking at building even better relationships with the Community College and Pfeiffer. Uh, we really don't wanna call us a K-12, we want it to be a K-16, because that way we can offer the best possibilities to every student that comes through our county. Good news, of course, would be that, uh, we have put a lot of hours in, uh, and a lot of hard work, when we put our fiscal crisis plan in, the board adopted the day after I was named, and we're no longer, uh, in a, a negative position that we're gonna have to ask taxpayers to step up at the end of this year and give us additional funds. So, again, that comes through a lot of hard work on everyone's behalf. And I did watch a program recently and got some research that was, uh, I'll just leave for the community to think about, 'cause I reflect on a lot of things that I hear. Our nation as a whole spends a hundred billion dollars, federal money, on the prison system, but yet we only spend sixty-five billion dollars on our school system. So, as I heard that statistic and thought about it, uh, it has bothered me, and it actually made me think outside the box a little bit, what kind of nation would we be if we actually reversed that trend? Would we have less prisons? Would we spend less money on prisoners? But it seems like, uh, public opinion is great when it comes to spending the eighty-four-hundred dollars on a student, but I really don't see any rhetoric going on for the thirty-five-thousand dollars we spend on a state's pris- prisoner. So, I think I'm challenging the community to think, dollars you invest in a student is proactive means to prevent them from ending up on the other end of the spectrum. So, I know that all of us, I'm a taxpayer, I don't wanna pay any more taxes, I will tell you that today, but I also don't- tell you that today, but I also don't want my tax dollars going to put someone up in a prison at $35,000 and only spend $8,400 on a child. So again, just challenging the community to think outside that box and look at where we spend our money federally and state, and do our kids not deserve to have more money spent on them than a prisoner? And that's the end of my comments.
Thank you. Chair would like to inquire of Ms. Watson, you said something later. Are you referring to a later meeting or subsequent meeting? Okay, I just want to make sure you weren't talking about later in this meeting. Thank you. Ms. Vaughn, we start off on your end tonight with board member comments.
Just like to say to Ms. Smith, appreciate you coming and bringing the Glee Club. Very much enjoyed their performance this evening, and also, congratulations to those who were recognized earlier. Thank you.
I also want to echo that the Glee Club was definitely a bright spot in my day, maybe the brightest. Thank you. And the message they brought was something that I too think we should adopt for our entire school system. Dr. Henson, thank you for your letter, and thank you for coming today and presenting. I hear you, and I think that your concerns definitely need to be followed by a great amount of discussion. I do want to ask you, I would say, in just trying to have a conversation, is...I think about the training that you have received and the experience that you have, and if you ever had the opportunity to go overseas in the mission field to help someone there, and before you got there, you were given specific training on how to communicate in that environment, and what are some of the things that you may be up against? If I were a sick individual in that village and you were coming over, that you had been retired for 10 years, but you still had the training and you could provide help, I would be so very grateful. So I would ask you to think of that.
Mr. McIntyre?
I would also like to thank Central Elementary School Glee Club for coming out tonight, and also, congratulations to everyone that was recognized. And kind of to just add on to what Mrs. Crump said, I think the...typically, it's a good word, but it seems to be a dirty word in this situation, is volunteer. These guys and women that are going to be volunteering are no less qualified than anybody else that's in that position. We have an officer in here tonight for our protection, and I'm pretty sure we all feel pretty comfortable with him being here. So these guys, they don't get just 20 hours of training. They're getting 20 years of training, you know, on the job prior to this 20 hours of training that they're coming in prior to this position. And I'm sure that Sheriff Burris and everybody who's getting this together is going to ensure these guys are top-notch and that this program's going to be successful.
Thank you. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, and happy National Assistant Principals Week. I appreciate all that you do. Ms. Smith, you about had me wanting to jump up and cheer. It's kind of like a Glee Club is singing and cheering with those bull pups, so that was great. Thank you. I do like that theme, we are all in this together. Congratulations to Austin Lindsay with the Governor's School recognition, to Mr. Pulis for the Fine Arts Educator Award, and certainly in memory of Mr. Jim Kennedy. I had the pleasure of not only being a student of Mr. Jim Kennedy's, but also was a colleague at one time, and a fine, fine man. Thank you to Ms. Yow for the program, Ms. Pennington, Ms. Brooks for putting together that with the Stop-Go-Tail. Dr. Henson, Dr. Barnum, and Dr. Coats, thank you for speaking and addressing the board. I wonder sometimes if a suggestion also might would be that we have Sheriff Burris and ought to meet, you know, go meet with parents and others at our schools. And I think that the school that your child, where you were representing was Baden, I believe, maybe? But, you know, maybe that is something too, just to have that conversation. And, you know, that will be something that maybe I will pass along. Thank you for addressing the board.
Thank you, each of you, and I'm going to call you Jenny. I hope you don't mind me doing that. I hear you, and I will not offer a but. It's an extremely complicated thing, and I don't pretend I have the answers to it. It's much like parenting. Sometimes you make decisions, and sometimes they're the wrong ones, sometimes they're the right ones. Your fear is that the ultimate bad decision in this case could be the absolute ultimate for that child, and I hear you. I won't offer a but, and I will just say it's extremely complicated, and none of us know what the absolute right answer is. We all want our children to be safe and have an opportunity to learn, and how we do that probably needs to evolve and needs to have open discussion with all of us. So thank you for coming.
Watson?
I'll ditto everything everybody said. Thank you for all that you do, and I want to say to the teachers, our principals, everyone that works for Stanley County Schools, we're on the downhill. Enjoy, study hard, study for those EOGs and all that good stuff, but have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Couple of comments. I don't know, I don't usually do advertisements for movies from up here. It's probably unseemly, but just curiosity in the audience, how many of you have gone to see the movie "I Can Only Imagine"? Can I see a show of hands? Oh, man. I have to admit, I cried. I'm a pretty hard case, but I cried. I think anyone that's a school teacher, anyone that's a parent ought to go see that movie. It gives you a feel of what some children have to grow up in. Tough environment, tough situation. The deck's stacked against them, but they can't overcome any obstacle out there. And it's...I won't tell you the whole movie, I just still play in it now. My wife went to see it for the second time today, but it's well worth your while. I think it's a...it's hard...well, it's an encouraging movie, but it shows you what can happen in a child's life when the right pieces fall in place and the right things happen along the road. It's just well worth your while. I'm not going to really speak to the issue about the school's security, but it's a troubling times we're in in this country, and I think what we're doing is...I think what the board did in defense of what the board did, I think they were trying to make a statement to the public that they are concerned about security in our schools. And I think this is a work in progress, you know, this is a work in progress. We...they're still putting the pieces together. And I think the main focus was Baden, I think, was the school in particular that you referred to. Some of the schools are in metropolitan areas that have police response fairly close by. Those were not our primary focus initially. We have...we do have two or three schools that's out in more remote areas, don't have police response close by, and that was, I think, it was the main focus that the board was looking at. But anyway, thank you for coming in and sharing your thoughts. We have a retreat, what's that, 28th of... And that's here? Okay. In addition to that, and Dr. James and I will talk a little more, we may do a little mini-work session after that, depends on what we can get our heads wrapped around. But anyway, so be prepared to stay maybe beyond midday a little bit. And our next regular meeting will be May the 1st here in the Commons Meeting Room. Chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session for Personnel Matters under North Carolina General Statutes 143318.11A6, Student Matters, North Carolina General Statutes 143318.11A1, and Attorney Client Matters, North Carolina General Statutes 143318.11A3. Motion to go into closed session under appropriate statutes for Mr. McIntyre. Do you have a second? Second, Gibson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.